October 17th, 2023 Board Meeting. We'll start out with the introductions. I'm Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Good morning, Xan Ojuro, Commissioner.
Nancy Wise, Commissioner.
Nancy Cronin, County Council.
Derek Nichols, Community Development.
Jeff Van Arsdale, Benton County Sheriff.
Eric Camilo, Board Recorder.
And do we have anybody online that wishes to introduce themselves? Hearing none, we'll move on to announcements. Are there any announcements this morning? Hearing none, we will go to review and approve the agenda. There is one change that I want to enter. We'll have a, after new business, we will have an executive session. And 11 o'clock or thereafter, we will have a public hearing regarding 2024 community development fee increases. With that, we'll get the meeting started off in a good fashion and have April Holland give us COVID update from the Health Department.
Good morning, Commissioners, Rachel Vance, everyone here. I have some slides today. They aren't in your packet, but in the spirit of collaboration and sharing with our community health center partners, thank you, Dr. Ken Carlson, our Medical Director at the CHC, put these slides together, and so we have some nice visuals to go along with the update today. First, I just want to share that COVID transmission remains high in our communities right now after a marked increase that started in July this year. But there are indications that we're approaching a plateau. Our testing positivity, which isn't shown here, is at 11.6%, which is down from a peak of 15% in mid-September. This graph is COVID hospitalizations over time. You can see the recent increasing trend getting closer to the numbers we saw about one year ago, though much lower than what we saw two years ago. Next, I'm going to go through a series of wastewater slides. So in our last update, we talked about wastewater monitoring of SARS-CoV-2, which has been going on for some time here in Oregon, but adding in our two other big respiratory virus players for seasonal illness. So we can see here COVID-19 or SARS-CoV-2. We know that wastewater monitoring can be more timely than hospitalization data and able to catch trends earlier. Most communities now you can see are in a plateau and some are decreasing. Hopefully, that means a decline to come. We were in a period a month ago where we're seeing more increase, more areas where wastewater signals were increasing, indicating that testing positivity and hospitalizations would continue to increase over time. So it's nice to have this data at our, for our use now to determine transmission of influenza. You can see here, there's really not a lot going on yet this season. Most years, this would start closer to December, though last year increases started around October. So we'll continue to keep a close eye on flu season. And here's the wastewater monitoring for respiratory syncytial virus, or RSV. No significant activity in terms of wastewater signals, though there are indications and other data that RSV transmission is increasing as the testing percent positivity is on the rise right now. And there have been five individuals hospitalized with RSV across the state in the recent couple of weeks, and four of the five were under five years old. So usually, the season is highest in January through March for RSV, though this last year was early, again, starting in October. So I failed to add the legend here to this chart. This is weekly emergency visits by the respiratory illness type. The black line indicates all combined. The orange is COVID-19 and RSV and influenza are shown in red and blue. And this, these ED visits really closely aligned with what we see in the wastewater data that we've seen an increase in COVID-19, but not yet an increase in RSV and flu. So we always kind of talk about what's out there with COVID-19 right now, and this shows our variant proportions over time. And so where our colors were pretty solid, we had dominating variants for a long time over the course of the pandemic. Now, we're seeing more of a mosaic, many variants sort of out there in the stew of things circulating, none of which are particularly more concerning relative to another, and none causing more severe illness or outcomes than another. So we've, we're in full swing with the latest COVID-19 vaccinations. As you all know, the COVID vaccine has moved from the last booster being a bivalent, including two strains of vaccine, to a monovalent targeted vaccine. It's recommended for everyone six months and older. And for everyone who's five and up, you just need one shot, even if you've never been vaccinated before. And those under five would need a second dose. Recent data from our COVID statewide database show that about 5,200 Benton County residents have received a new vaccine so far. There has been some challenges and rollout. You know, this is a really different delivery model than we've seen previously with a commercial, the commercialization of the COVID-19 vaccines. However, many pharmacies and providers do have the vaccine available, and our community health centers also are administering COVID vaccine at this time. They're just kind of coming in smaller batches than we've seen previously, but it's working out okay. So for RSV vaccination, this is, this is new stuff. I may have mentioned a couple of months ago that we were waiting on guidance for seasonal vaccination for RSV. Well, now vaccination is approved for pregnant people, 32 to 36 weeks, at 32 to 36 weeks gestation in the fall to protect those infants after delivery. And then there's a monoclonal antibody shot for infants, for new babies, and then up to eight months when they're heading into the RSV season to provide protection. And then there's a vaccination also available to persons 60 and up. And we all know, we all hear from public health every year that annual influenza vaccination is very important. Now is the time to seek out that influenza vaccination. It is out there. It's available, recommended for everyone six and up. And the combination in the quadrivalent and trivalent vaccines are really similar to what we had last year. So we haven't really talked a lot about about the changes that we've seen from CDC in terms of isolation guidance. We were very, very attuned to the changes in guidance during the height of the pandemic and during the public health emergency. However, we have seen shifts toward a more generalized isolation period for respiratory illness. So most people with COVID-19 don't have to isolate for a set number of days. However, it's important that they stay at home until 24 hours after not having a fever without the use of fever-reducing medications, and that the symptoms are improving. And importantly, to mask around people for 10 days following the onset of symptoms or that, the time of the positive test, and to avoid contact with people who are at high risk for 10 days. All right, that's what I have for you today. Thanks again to Dr. Carlson at the CHC for the visuals. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I guess I've got a question about the RSV. It seemed like a year ago, and that wasn't talked about. Is it accurate that this is something that's been around and we're getting better at identifying, oh, that's not a cold? That's more specific and then a little bit of the vaccination recommendation. Over that again.
Has just turned back on. Thank you. So RSV, or respiratory syncytial virus, has been a driver and a big part of the burden of hospitalizations and deaths in the respiratory virus season for a long time. I think it's coming into the conversation more broadly, partly because of our awareness of seasonal respiratory viruses, and partly because this incredible new vaccine is available to help prevent hospitalization and death amongst those who are most at risk. So the three different types of treatments or immunizations that are available now are to individuals who are pregnant and late in their pregnancy and sort of coming into the fall/winter season. And then there is the treatment to babies just born up to eight months old, again, going just into that first RSV season to give protection from RSV. Most of the, most of the individuals hospitalized with RSV are kids under five and predominantly within that babies under two, and then, and then individuals who are older. And then the third, the third population of vaccination is people who are 60 and up and get an RSV vaccine as well.
Thank you. That's helpful. Is there one vaccine? I've seen something advertised, and you, or do different companies have different vaccines?
That's a good question. That would be a great question for Cindy D'Angeli, our Immunizations Nurse and Coordinator. She is an expert at handling all of our agreements with the various manufacturers. I can get that information and bring it back to you.
Great. What it is recommended for those three groups to get immunized? And it's, we're still not too late to get that.
Yeah, we're just now starting to see the testing positivity creep up. Still not to the point to where we, the state would call the season open, as it were, to begin more tracking and outreach. So right now is a great time to get that vaccination.
I guess a follow-up question there. It seems like the usual, you get the vaccine and then you're fully immunized a couple of weeks later. Is that standard with flu and COVID and RSV vaccines?
That's fairly standard, again, in terms of the details at the point where protection should be maximized. I'd have to bring that back to you, but that's, that's the standard advice across the, across the board for most vaccines.
But the theme is there's a lag between getting immunized?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, yeah, you're gonna, it's gonna take some time for that immunity to be conferred.
Well, I appreciate that COVID is kind of receding into normal, well, flu, COVID, RSV. And I appreciate broadening out your report to keep us up to date on what's, what's out there and what we should be doing to keep ourselves and our community safe.
Thank you, Chair Malone. If, I would, I would love to revisit the timing of these reports. I know you have a lot to cover in your meetings. I'm happy to come to you quarterly or even to our joint health meetings to bring you an overarching update on respiratory viral illnesses and other things happening out in the community's world.
Really? And I think that's worth a conversation. It's also best you, trying to figure out best use of your time. So I think that's worth further conversation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next up, orderly floodplain program. Toby Lewis, morning.
Morning. Thank you. Okay, so we have a couple of topics to talk about this morning. Just have a list of four. The first is integration of the National Flood Insurance Program and the Endangered Species Act. This is just a quick update on where that stands. So FEMA's contractor has prepared a draft outline and layout of the environmental impact statement document. We went over, there was a meeting recently and we went over that and a tentative, just kind of general schedule that they've identified for completing the environmental impact review. The next steps are for the contractor to draft the complete environmental impact statement document and circulate that out for review. They'll also be creating several technical guidance documents. One will be a better explanation of the four options available to communities to document compliance with the new standards. There will be a model code as well as a guidance document on how to evaluate whether the proposed riparian setback buffer is appropriate for each individual community and adjust that if the community feels that that is needed. They'll be fleshing out the schedule a bit more and we'll have an opportunity to work on outreach to gather community feedback. And so I'll be continuing to work with our internal partners to set that up. But we're still waiting on a little bit stronger outline or more fleshed out schedule to be able to do that. The second item is the community rating system. So we just finished up the annual recertification for that. That goes on a, so every year, there's a, we have to provide documentation about what our floodplain program is doing and how we are continuing to implement our floodplain program. Every five years, there's a large audit. This year is not one of those five years. So it's a fairly, it's, it's a documentation gathering process, but it's not nearly as extensive. So we submitted two elevation certificates for completed dwellings this year. Those will be reviewed. We also provided documentation that we are continuing to log all of our floodplain inquiries that come in. We're continuing to maintain information on our website about floodplains and how to develop effectively and where to go for more information and encouraging residents to look into purchasing flood insurance, because that is their quickest, most effective means of recovering, recovery and repairing structures after flood damage. And we're continuing to maintain materials in the library about floodplains and flood hazards. We also continue to provide outreach to lending institutions and insurance agencies and property owners on an annual basis. The audit, that audit documentation was submitted last Wednesday, and the auditing agency has about 90 days, so until the end of November, to respond and either identify errors on the elevation certificates or let us know that everything is okay. And I expect it'll be everything's okay, but we'll see what they say. Next up is the Northwest Regional Floodplain Management Association Conference. So I was very grateful for the opportunity to attend that last month. Yeah, last month, sorry. So this is a key regional floodplain conference that happens once a year. It covers the areas of Washington, Oregon, Idaho, Alaska, and British Columbia. It's an excellent resource for building partnerships, maintaining communication, and getting updates on current trends and requiring, changing requirements in the floodplain profession. So some of the updates from this year's conference were going over the new elevation certificate form. FEMA has sent out a brand new one that's similar, but slightly revised and helps provide an easier way to, for servers to document a variety of situations that might be occurring on a proper, for a structure in terms of venting and types of flood venting and things like that. There was also some updates on the community rating system program. So that annual certification that I just talked about, that whole program is in the process of being revised again. And there, it's only happened like once or twice since I've been here. So it's, it's not very often, but they are working on it to make it more effective and hopefully encourage communities in more effective ways to continue to advise residents of flood hazards and ways to help reduce their risk during flood events and incentivize those, those opportunities. There was also an update on a redesign of the community assistance visit program. That's one that FEMA does, so that's a different auditing program. Right now, that system, we just actually finished our second community assistance visit through FEMA. They're supposed to happen on a three to five-year basis, and we've, we're on our second one in about 20 years just because FEMA staff and state staff tend to have a lot on their plates and are not able to get to that very quickly. And so it takes, sometimes it takes a number of years to get through that process. So they're working on developing a quicker, simpler system that will help keep those audits going more quickly. And there were also some sessions on substantial damage assessments, which are required to be done after any disaster event to go out and take a look at the damage done to structures. It's usually, it's a, have a community-wide event or, I guess, a jurisdictional requirement. So the goal is to identify any structures that have been significantly damaged. It's specific to structures and floodplains. And if they have, then those structures need to be brought into compliance with current floodplain regulations to help ensure that they're not going to be repeatedly damaged by being built back at the same elevations or in the same manner if they needed some upgrades to them. There was also another session that I found really interesting that was on flood after fire. So anytime there are wildfires in an area, then the risk of flooding is increased, and it's increased, and usually in areas where it's not mapped, where it's more of a surprise than people are expecting. And so that one was interesting, too. The last update is just on the Regional Floodmap Exploration Event that we hosted. At the end of September, we had presentations from partner agencies, including Army Corps of Engineers, FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency, Department of Geology and Mineral Industries, and the National Weather Service. Had a nice variety of professions in the room for attendees. So we had attendees from Public Works, Emergency Development, Emergency Management, Planning, Floodplain Management. We also had a couple partner agencies, so Department of Land Conservation and Development, and then the national representative for the Silver Jackets Group. And so it's a joint state and federal partnering agency that brings staff from the, those same agencies that were presenting that morning. The discussion in the afternoon was helpful to a lot of the attendees and the presenting agencies. We talked about various scenarios in which flood, a variety of flood maps might be used, which, which types of maps might be most useful. And also, there was a helpful discussion about the usefulness of the variety of map products as well as during, in preparation for a flood event or during a flood event, which products, local jurisdiction staff are going to first and why they're going there, and how quickly they need to be able to access that information, which the presenting agencies really found useful in terms of how they can work on improving the usability of their products and access to that. And that's about it. So if you have questions, happy to answer.
Any questions for Toby?
No questions, but I look forward to hearing the schedule for the ESA meetings and review of their proposed plan.
Me, too. It's coming.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for all your work. I guess, how was the Northwest Regional Floodplain Management Conference?
It was a blast. It was nice, yes.
So, and you won an award, right? You won like Best Floodplain Manager a little while back?
I did.
So at this conference, do you get to wear like a ribbon or a crown or something so that everybody knows?
I should have brought my, they give out badges and they gave little tags on there, so yes, that was fun. But no, they didn't, they just, they did announce it though during my avalanche, so it was nice.
That's awesome.
At the September 26th meeting, that was in this room, had a full house and a variety of agencies represented. Would you refresh my memory on the Silver Jackets? Who those people are and maybe why they get to call themselves the Silver Jacket Brigade or?
Yeah, well, so after the introduction in the morning, I'm a little better prepared for that, for that session. So Oregon, so Silver Jackets, each state has its own, its own group. It's a group of state and federal representatives from a variety of different agencies. For Oregon, that means representatives from Army Corps of Engineers, Federal Emergency Management Agency, Department of Geology and Mineral Industries, and I think National Weather Service. But they have representatives, they get together and look at But they have representatives, they get together and look at projects. In Oregon, it's specifically for flood-related projects. And how to more effectively communicate and respond to flood events and make sure that each agency is aware of, of what's going on in the other agencies. The reason for the Silver Jackets term is because when there's a disaster event, each agency comes with a specific color so that they're easily identifiable during that event. So FEMA may be blue or I think Corps of Engineers might be red. I can't remember the exact colors. But the idea was that by calling themselves the Silver Jackets Team, then nobody has any more weight, no one agency has any more weight than the other. They're all there as a unified team to work together.
Great. Thank you and appreciate having a floodplain expert in, in-house here. Appreciate your efforts, Toby.
Thank you.
Next up, communications update, Corey Grogan.
What if we had a link to a video, like, you know, and we could do something that was just as inclusive and as culturally sensitive and everything is possible. So we came up with the idea to do this video to actually show, we set up a whole, the whole deal. And we had, my son was in there. We had other staff bring their kids in. So we actually walked through the entire process of what sealants and fluoride and what the silver diamine fluoride looks in. Just the whole process so they could see it. And kids could be a little bit more familiar too. So I'm so bummed we can't watch it. It's so good. So what we've done this year is we put the QR code on all of our consent forms and those are going out to families and schools now. And we've also made a lot of effort to get into open houses and to talk with teachers and educators, all the staff at the school, so they understand what we're doing. And nobody will panic because silver diamine fluoride is, it's fantastic. It's non-invasive. It stops cavities pretty much in their tracks. The downfall is it makes them look a little dark and maybe darker than it looked with just having the cavity. So that's something that's not reversible. So we want to make sure that people truly understand what that is and the difference between regular fluoride and silver diamine fluoride. So we're showing staff the video saying, okay, this is what it looks like. Here's the before and after. So if your student comes back to class and they're like, oh, this is dark now. We're like, that's yay. We're celebrating that because that means it's working. That means we caught a cavity early and we did a good thing. It doesn't mean that, you know, it's dark and things are bad. So it's been very well received and we're super proud of it. And I really wish we could see it, but there's links. You all can find it. And we did do it in English and Spanish. I don't know if I mentioned that before. Spanish being our, definitely our second largest language spoken. So we did it in both and it was a huge group effort and we're really proud of it. So. If you have any questions for me, happy to answer.
I got to see it last night, so.
You did watch it?
Yes.
Yay. We tried to share it at the CHC board meeting and technology was not in our favor that night. It was not in the cards, but I'm glad you got to see it.
It's short and sweet and factual and I think looks very useful.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, so I really appreciate that. I wanted to give Molly an opportunity to speak to that. And I just think it's important to show that we have a wide array of ways that we can communicate things to different audiences. And this is a good example of successful communication, something that's visual. And big thanks to John. He's helped us create a template for these types of videos. And so I really think that that's going to benefit Benton County in the future. Thank you, Molly.
Thank you.
Okay, next slide. So I just wanted to circle back real quick. The Fall Festival is another successful community outreach event. We had a sponsorship this year, just an awesome opportunity to, for us to interact with the community in a positive way. At the event, we had a main stage banner, logo on the materials there, a vendor space website. Signed up over 140 people for our e-news. And we got to thank you and the Gazette Times as well. So if you haven't been to the Fall Festival, it's a great event. And I also just wanted, there's a picture of Zan there. I believe that was from the fair. But I, I wanted to give a shout out to our volunteers who continue to support these efforts. And I know they enjoy it, but just very much appreciated. And I know the community appreciates it as well. Next slide. So here are some photos from some recent outreach we, we've done. And I appreciate the opportunity to follow Toby because at first that was underplayed a little bit. That, that event was actually with the Silver Jackets. That includes all those federal partners and we had other local partners here as well. Is extremely important. It's actually the first of its kind at the local level. And so we did do some outreach on that. We did a story and that was a fun event. We had the opportunity to get to know Rachel a little bit and highlight her journey to Oregon. So thank you, Rachel, for supporting that effort. I really think that product turned out great. I received positive feedback. And then Hispanic Heritage Month. So there was a number of folks who were involved with that. But just really having the opportunity to do something a little bit more with that proclamation is, that's something we've been striving to do. And so the coordination on that with our, with our health department folks and others. And thank you to the DA for reading the proclamation and Casa Unidos. That was an important event for us, I think. And thank you, Zan, as well for supporting that. Next slide. Awareness and outreach campaigns. We mentioned the flood mitigation event. But we also got information out about our property stack statements, the video that we did on Hispanic Heritage Month. And mentioned Rachel's journey and then the RFPs for our Sustainable Materials Management Plan. We helped share information for that and hopefully that leads to some applications. That's obviously going to be an important project for the county is that Sustainable Materials Management Plan. Upcoming is the historic courthouse advisory committee update. We're going to share information about the story of the historic courthouse advisory committee and solicit feedback from the community prior to drafting a report with recommendations about preservation of the historic courthouse. Because as I understand it, that being an extremely important historical monument that preserving it is a priority. And I know that. And so we're happy to help with outreach. And then also there's a new evacuation route from Oak Creek to Ponderosa. And it's been an important project for the county and it just shows the result of some good work. And so we'll be working on doing some outreach and possibly in conjunction with the community there in Oregon State University to do a tour of that evacuation route. Next slide. We continue to do advertising and go ahead and do four clicks, Erica. Employment Opportunities, the Biennium Report. Signing up for e-news and how to receive Benton County information. This is just our current advertisement that we have for our ongoing ads with the Corvallis Advocate, Philomath News, Alsey Valley Voice, and Community Radio PSA. Next slide. And here we usually show you commissioners this slide just so you can see a list of some of the things that we've been highlighting this month. We don't talk about all these things. However, I would like to mention our podcast. Last episode, I think, was a huge success. We showed with our analytics last time that there are people who've been watching it. We want to continue to figure out creative ways to get information out to folks and especially sharing it with people who are close to these subjects, even if it's just an email group. But also sending it out to our listservs on social media, sending out to local media partners. Last episode was about the Corvallis Daytime Drop-In Center, featuring Allison Hopgood and others who work there and also benefit from the services. And I think if you get a chance to listen to that, I would, I would highly recommend it. Definitely has an emotional appeal. And I just think Dan Crawl, who supports us with that, he's from our local community radio station, used to work with OPB. He did a great job presenting that information and really having an emotional component to that, which I appreciated. Next slide. Four clicks, please. So we continue to work on the historical driving tour. That, that requires a lot of research to get it right. We have to do some, this is a former publication that we had that's going to, there's some sites on there that we need to update. So we're working on that, but I'm really excited. That's going to be an opportunity to have a historical document that is current. Folks can go around and see different historical sites in Benton County. Really fun program, Riparian Resources. We're also working on a publication for that. Biennium Report Distribution, we're currently working on a plan to get the Biennium Report out to a variety of locations throughout the county. Libraries, community centers, chambers of commerce, visitor centers, things of that nature. We're also working on a publication, how to receive Benton County information, which I can share with you all after the meeting. Because we continue to ask, well, how do I receive information? So I wanted to put together a publication where we can share it on a TV screen. We can share it on social media, but we can also have a handout that we can give folks on how to receive information. Signing up for our media releases, subscribing to our e-newsletter and following us on social media. And also how, being able to get additional. Next slide. I wanted to give you a brief update on the website project from the public information perspective. We've been working closely with IT. We're working on putting together a photo and video archive for the website. We'll be helping with content oversight to make sure that we're using plain language and it's easily appealing. Plain language is, we've been doing some training, supporting training for that. The web content specialist is now on board, working with IT. And IT is doing a lot of work on the backend. And then we'll also, once the website gets closer to rolling out, we'll, we'll be doing some public outreach. Next slide. That's all I have for today. Are there any questions?
Who is our web content specialist?
He is, why am I blanking? Ryan Kidder. He's, he's great. He is, he's very experienced and he's also has excellent communication skills. So I, I think you guys, you all will like Ryan. He's a great, great person.
And just to add to that, Commissioner, we will have our IT director in, in the next week or two, who can give you a little bit more of a robust understanding of our launch date, which I believe is at the end of December.
Thank you. The other story that I was really thrilled to hear last night at the Community Health Centers Board Meeting was from Molly Brino again about the partnership with Chance in Albany and opening a one day a month dental clinic over there. And the incredible community support and donations of equipment and assistance in moving everything in. I think that would be a great story. So.
Yep, I'm taking notes on that. We can certainly look into circling back and seeing if we can.
And Molly's description of, of the, how it all came together was so excited that it was, it was fun. And I think it, it's a resource that people should be aware of.
Standing.
Well, I, I think we're all looking forward to updated website and more user-friendly. So glad to hear you're involved with that. You mentioned the historical driving tour is the aim to, I guess, what's, once you have the information, what's the format for access? Another pamphlet or?
It's actually a booklet and it covers different regions of the county. And so it will have updated photos and updated sites with a little, just a little bit of information about each site. And I think they'll be numbered, so it'll have a map as well. Follow the tour and read about each place and then go see it. And it's just a little, it's a booklet. It'll be, you know, somewhat robust. It might be, this is an estimate at this point, but I'd say 15 to 30 page booklet.
Great. Looking forward to that.
I'll just piggyback off that too. I'm also looking forward to that. Who are you working with on that project?
We're actually working with a new designer and unfortunately, I think I'm going to blank out on his name right now. However, he did show me some work examples and I wanted to choose him for this project because he's done a lot of high-end design work and it really shows in his examples. And so we kind of wanted to have a nice polished look for this publication. So be interested to get some feedback on it because I do think it's going to look really nice.
Awesome. And on the other side, on the, I guess, the historical side, are you partnering with anybody on that? Our Historic Resources Commission or the Preservation Works or?
We are. And Inga from our Community Development Department is, has been reaching out to those folks and working with them and finding out what needs to be updated. Because like I said, there was a past publication. So she's doing that coordination on our end. And I know she has a role with the historical stuff for Benton County. So yes, we're doing coordination on that. Continue to follow up to make sure that we're touching base with the right partners. But yeah, she's been putting in some substantial legwork, figuring out what needs to be updated. And if there are sites that we can add to that publication that aren't already in there.
Thank you.
Well, great. It's nice to get caught up on your considerable efforts trying to get the word out to our community.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is the Consent Calendar.
I moved to approve, I moved to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consent calendar approved. Next is proclaiming October 2023 is the Great Oregon Shakeout Month in Benton County. Chelsea. Thank you.
Of course. Red light means on. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm actually going to return this over to Chelsea Chika for the reading of the proclamation.
Good morning, Commissioners. In the matter of proclaiming October 2023, the Great Oregon Shakeout Month in Benton County. The threat of the Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake will greatly affect the entire region, including the residents of Benton County, Oregon. U.S. Department of Homeland Security and Federal Emergency Management Agency has identified the Cascadia Subduction Zone earthquake as a major national level threat. When individuals take responsibility for preparing their families and their communities, the chance of survival and return to normalcy all in a disaster is greatly increased. The Great Oregon Shakeout was designed to bring awareness of the threat of both crustal and subduction zone earthquakes. The Benton County Sheriff's Office Emergency The Benton County Sheriff's Office Emergency Management Division partners with federal, state, local, tribal, territorial, private, and volunteer agencies to inform individuals on how to take action through our public education campaigns and community exercises. Residents, businesses, and visitors of Benton County, Oregon are urged to plan ahead for all disasters and encourage their family and their friends to also do so by participating in annual readiness events and drills. Benton County Emergency Management and the Benton County Emergency Operations Center staff will participate in the national-level exercise, IRN-OR twenty twenty-four. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Benton County Board of Commissioners, October twenty twenty-three as the Great Oregon Shakeout Month, and encourage all community members, businesses, and visitors to develop their own emergency preparedness plans and practice basic earthquake safety drills such as drop, cover, and hold on October nineteenth at ten nineteen a.m.
Thank you. Your motion to approve the proclamation?
Sure, I move to approve the proclamation. Cascadia Subduction Zone Great Shakeout event. And proclaiming the month of October as awareness month.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Well, you mentioned the word exercise and shakeout. It seems like we should all stand up and shake or something. Are there any other events or to get our attention and let us know what we should be doing?
The county is participating in Great Shakeout Month, so October nineteenth, this Thursday, I believe everyone is asked to participate. And then we will be in our EOC training that day, so our entire IMT will be participating as well. There's definitely a county-wide initiative.
Thank you, and looking forward to the nineteenth, which is Friday.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Thank you.
Thanks. On the agenda, next is a public hearing. We will postpone that till eleven o'clock or slightly thereafter, so we'll get into new business. Request for a letter of support from the BOC for the Public Health Reaccreditation, April Holland.
Hi again. So Commissioners, I was able to sort of tee up this this topic during our joint quarterly meeting, so really just requesting a few moments of your time here. Public health reaccreditation is currently underway. It's been swinging for over a year now. We've got our new Quality Improvement Coordinator, Amanda Garcia. She's, she's working remotely today, so I'm here in her stead. Has been working with our Pilot Light Team, our Steering Committee for Public Health Reaccreditation Efforts. Benton County was first accredited by the Public Health Accreditation Board in twenty seventeen. And all the excitement we've had from twenty twenty until now has delayed efforts just a bit, but our, our window for submitting our reaccreditation materials is coming up in March, and our application for reaccreditation will be submitted at the end of October. And so our Board of Health, we request a letter of support in these efforts. I shared some of this during our joint meeting, but public health accreditation really serves to demonstrate that we're constantly improving our services. Some of the current efforts that are underway now include a performance management system to ensure that we can track our goals throughout our public health programs and to align plans. We also are deep into workforce development planning and quality improvement planning. So thanks so much for your time and your consideration for this letter of support.
I would move approval of the letter of support to the Public Health Accreditation Board for the Health Department's reaccreditation efforts. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we
We're going to be here anyway, so.
Okay, we'll take a short break, and next up is a discussion regarding the twenty twenty-four fee schedule for environmental health. Be back soon.
Well, we will resume our board meeting with eight point two. Discussion regarding the 2024 fee schedule for environmental health. Good morning.
Hi, it's that time again to talk about environmental health licensing fees. Last year, when we brought this to you, was my first foray into this with, under the close guidance of Scott Krueger. As you remember, Scott Krueger is our working out of class environmental health manager. Scott's been with Benton County, is it nineteen?
Eighteen years.
Eighteen years in September. And is an incredible registered environmental health specialist with our food licensing and other programs. Before we jump in, just want to give you a really happy update on our environmental health manager recruitment that has been going on for over a year now. We are in the offer stages of recruitment, and I really hope that we can have someone join us really soon. And I really hope that they're sitting right next to me. So we're going to jump right into this presentation now. If we can get this slide to advance, great. Okay. As you know, every year we look at these environmental health licensing fees for your approval. Scott, anything you want to say specifically about what the fees cover? Or, you know, you mentioned something really interesting about some counties having a different schedule for their fee licensing. And I wonder if that might be just something to put in the board's pocket for maybe future discussion.
Sure, absolutely. On a bimonthly basis, I attend the conference of local environmental health supervisors, which was just this last Thursday. There was thirty of thirty-six counties represented during the meeting. Some of the counties, the larger counties in the Portland metro area actually visit their board triannually to get their fees approved. I thought that was interesting. I know we've, for as long as I've been here, we've come to the board annually. So I thought that was an interesting concept that we might explore or discuss. And then another interesting part of that meeting too was obviously everybody's being affected by inflation. And so of the people that were represented and we all get our time to share out about our particular counties. Most every county indicated they were having fee increases, but were quite varied, anywheres from a one percent increase up to twenty percent in some areas. And so just thought we'd mention that because that was twenty percent increase is pretty sizable for some folks.
Thanks, Scott. So first, we'll provide a little bit of context, recent fee adjustments that we've seen here in Benton County. Last year, as you may recall, licensing fees increased by three percent. There were no fee adjustments in 2022. And then in 2021, there was a three percent increase. However, we had a COVID credit of fifty percent on 2020 fees that was applied to the 2021 fees. Looking back a little further, you can see anywhere from three to five percent on average for the last several years. There were some years between 2005 and 2010 where we did see some really big increases, up to fourteen percent on a given year. So all this context is really to say that we do want to remain mindful of both the general fund request made to the board as well as to to keep up with inflation and costs so that we don't have a shock to our licensees here in the county. So every year we look at the budget, the annual budget to determine, to help calculate proposed fees. The adjustment in budget year over year was six point six percent from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four. And that's in line pretty closely with inflation costs. Every year, we also calculate the number of hours that our specialists are out there, able to do the work in the field to come up with that hourly rate for charges. So basically, you see an individual full-time employee's overall time and then all the time that isn't field time, basically. This was collected years ago. And then these are actual averages that we continue to use. So the total field hour per specialist comes to twelve hundred fifty-one. We've got four specialists that gives us that many hours. Okay, we're going to dig into the numbers now. So it's pretty straightforward to start with. We have our total expenses, our total hours for field work. And then you divide those and you get two hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents per hour. And that's if we were to cover all all expenses with licensing fees. However.
Sure. So the big however is that we're only supposed to charge fifteen percent of our direct costs to the people that we're licensing. And you'll see in further slides that our administrative costs are in excess of that administrative rule. And so this is why we come to you for general fund dollars to make up the balance of that so that we're meeting state law.
Thanks, thanks so much for that explanation, Scott. So this is a really dizzy slide with a lot of numbers on it, but all of it is to really show you that the total administrative costs, the central costs and the department cost allocations exceed that fifteen percent allowed. The first green row listed shows that capped at ten percent. That would be the absolute minimum required general fund contribution to allow us to move forward within the OAR. However, the contribution from the Board of Commissioners has been in excess of this to be mindful of our community's needs and the costs of those licensing. So if we were to be at this, I'm going to go to the next slide because it's easier to say this. So using the partial cost recovery that we just saw with a ninety-nine thousand dollar general fund contribution gives us, indicates that ninety-two percent of our costs would be recovered with that ninety-nine thousand dollar contribution. However, it would correspond to a fee increase of thirteen percent for our licensed facilities. So in the last, the last couple of years, rather than ninety-two percent cost recovery, we found we've been at eighty-eight percent cost recovery. That's what's at the point at which fees have been approved by the Board of Commissioners. If we look, if we look at eighty-eight percent cost recovery, that corresponds to the hourly rate of two hundred twenty-eight dollars per hour, corresponds to a fee increase of seven percent, which is very close to the budget increase of six point six percent, and corresponds to a county general fund contribution increase of six percent. So those are very much aligned. This is where our recommendation falls to the board at that seven percent fee increase. Scott, do you want to mention the Food Service Advisory Committee as well in your recent conversation with them?
Sure. It's nice to report that we actually have a fully, fully staffed Food Service Advisory Committee now. The pandemic actually, you know, as with all things, really messed things up. So we had a full board yesterday. We elected a chair and a co-chair, which is great. And they did agree after we showed them, after I presented this to them yesterday, that they were in agreement with a seven percent increase. They would, they would be supportive of that.
So you've seen a couple of slides with, with a couple of scenarios. However, we, this is your decision as the Board of Health and the Board of Commissioners. And so we've listed out several scenarios of various adjustments to fees and indicating the general fund contribution and the change in general fund contribution from the previous year. Again, thirteen percent would be that, that minimum contribution. Seven percent is where we sort of align with the similar percent recovery of full costs and increases in budget. And then we also illustrated three additional adjustments for, just to illustrate where things would fall. So I think it's helpful and it was helpful for the Food Service Advisory Committee to see what this means in terms of, you know, their actual pocketbooks. So when we chose a handful for specific fees and illustrated the various adjustments, what those new fees would be.
Yeah, so as you're looking down there, you know, again, I think what's palatable to people is that seven percent target range there. Specifically for the, you know, I think we, we have, we have several categories. It's interesting in Oregon that your licensure is based on how many customer seats that you have available. I'm not really sure who came up with that model, but that's what we have to deal with. And so you can see the fifty-one to one fifty range is, it's pretty popular with people. It provides them a lot of flexibility for growth. I would say we have four categories that go from zero to fifteen, sixteen to fifty, this fifty-one to one fifty, and then a one fifty-one plus, which is pretty rare. We don't, we don't see too many facilities that are that large. And so you can see that the, the increase is, is there's an increase, but it's not, it's, it's palatable for sure.
So thank you so much for your time today. Before we close and answer any questions you may have, I just want to share that we continue, that environmental health continues to have an equity lens on some of the licensing fees to help, help with hardship. We also have benevolent, benevolent temporary restaurant fees. And Scott can provide more information about those fees if you have any questions or would like more information on those.
I would just like to highlight the fact that it has been the board's preference that we do provide those discounted rates for benevolent associations and organizations. And that this continues to subsidize those rates, and I'm grateful for that. And also the subsidy for septic system repair, just because it incentivizes people to actually take care of those failing septic systems and keep our water quality in good shape. So thank you. I think that those are very positive incentives to provide.
So you said Oregon, so the OAR limits us to fifteen percent of direct costs. Can you please give me, it's a really brief example of an indirect cost or what? Yeah, an example of a direct cost and indirect cost.
So the way that it's been calculated is it's the indirect costs are our department and county, our allocations. And that's all that we're using for indirect. So all of our IT finance buildings and things like that.
I remember the discussions during COVID and not being able to get out to restaurants and giving the fifty percent credit, I think, made sense in troubled times and restaurants were definitely hit hard by the COVID and especially starting in spring of 2020. And so I think I feel good about how we handled that. And now it's kind of time to get back to figuring out what normal is. And I think for the current year, the social security increase was over eight percent. Next year, it's three and a half percent or something like that. And so the seven percent increase seems like it's pretty accurate as far as, yes, there is inflation and we're trying to be fair, but also keep up with actual costs. So I feel comfortable at this level that we're being fair and also taking care of business.
I would just like to add that, you know, I feel like I have my pulse on the, on the food service community in our county, probably better than most. And, you know, time and time again, I hear how greatly they appreciated that. And I do intern here from the benevolent organizations who actually appreciate that we keep our costs low so that they can, you know, do their fundraising and function without having too much extraneous costs added to, added to their costs. So I feel comfortable in saying that they greatly appreciate it.
Nice to hear.
So question, you mentioned something about the idea of bringing this back multiple times a year. Is that a discussion now?
I think what the discussion would, would be in the future is, is coming to you for fee justification potentially once every, well, at an interval of your choosing. I'm just noticing that, like I said, some of our other county partners, specifically the ones up north, go to their board once every three years. We can continue to do whatever you would like us. Normally, we come to you every year, but I thought it was interesting that they were coming on a three-year cycle.
Once every three years, okay.
Correct.
I misheard you. I thought you said three times a year, and I was thinking, wow.
No, that's, that would be a big match.
Very good. Well, I do appreciate all the work that you guys have done on this and bringing all the calculations and the multiple options with the detailed impacts. I think overall, that really demonstrates to the community that the county has done our due diligence. So thank you. And I'm happy to make a motion.
Just a comment on the how often this is done, I guess annually seems like a good idea. We're not quite sure what the future brings, but unless it's undue burden on staff, I think that that makes sense to review annually and have relatively small increases rather than waiting two or three years and then having a ten or twelve percent increase. But, you know, let us know how it looks from your side of the table.
Sure, we can actually bring you, bring you back some data. I know that what was presented, at least from my partner in Clackamas County, that they they went before the board and got approved for five percent increases over a three-year period. I think that, you know, there could, as with all things, there could be some pros and cons with that. You may end up, you know, not keeping up with the times and then arbitrarily later on having fees increase. So, you know, I will be more than happy to get some data to bring back to you at a future date so we can talk about that.
Right. Okay.
I move to recommend a seven percent increase in environmental health fees effective January first, 2024, and encourage health department staff to bring forth an order reflecting as much at a future Board of Commissioners meeting.
We'll see you next week.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
April quietly said, I'll see you next week. Okay, great. Thank you. All right, next up, eight point three, approval of the 2023-25 Community Corrections Plan and IG between the state of Oregon and Benton County. Justin Carley.
Morning, my honor. So before I started, again, my name is Justin Carley with Sheriff's Office, and I oversee the Pro-Information Division. I have Don Dale here with me as well, and I wanted to thank Don for the work that she's done in helping me put together the Community Corrections Plan for this biennium. We've been working on biennial plans for quite a while now, and I just really appreciate her help too. Also wanted to thank the sheriff too for his support of our division. It just means a lot to the folks that are doing the day-to-day work within our Pro-Information Division, and I just want to say thank you to him. I also wanted to point out too that I have our leadership team here with us from our Pro-Information Division. I've got Joel Pickard and Abraham Griswold, both are sergeants with our Pro-Information Division, and they're here as well. So I'm here today to present the 2023-2025 Community Corrections Plan. And as you know, we're required to submit a CCA plan to the Department of Corrections, including our program descriptions and our budget summary. The Oregon Department of Corrections also requires for counties to enter into an intergovernmental agreement to receive our grant and aid funds for our community corrections program. So today, what I wanted to do is just touch briefly on four areas. I want to talk about the budget, our staff, our office workload and our programs, and then answer any questions that you may have. So first, a quick rundown of our community corrections budget. This biennium, the legislature approved the statewide community corrections budget at two hundred and fifty-two million dollars. In Benton County's allocation percentage for twenty-three, twenty-five is one point two-two percent, which is about three million dollars. To get to the statewide two hundred and fifty-two million dollars, it was a combination of the baseline budget of two hundred and forty-six million. To get to the statewide $252 million, it was a combination of the baseline budget of $246 million And then Package 801, which was a grant in aid supplemental allocation of $5.7 million. And that's how they got to the 252 million. So for a little bit of historical perspective, uh, I went back and, and looked, uh, the statewide community corrections budget, uh, during the 1719 biennial was $273 million. In 1921, it was $268 million. In 2123, it was $284 million. In 2325, it's $252 million. So I, I was sharing with the sheriff that, uh, I believe I presented CCA plans to the board now since 2009. And it just seems to be increasingly dynamic, uh, each legislative session and creative in terms of What the statewide community corrections budget is going to look like and, uh, in terms of sustainable funding. Next, I'd like to give a rundown of our pro-information staff and I'll start with our pro-information officers. Josh Hall and Susan Sowers, both pro-information officers with us. They've been with our office since 2001. Cody Smith has been with us since 2007. Ryan Roth has been with us since 2008. Josh Pritt has been with us since 2013 and Shawna Johnson has been with us since 2014. We also have two support staff, uh, Summer Smallwood and Katie Bateman. And Summer has been with us since 2017 and Katie has been with us since 2022. And then we've got our leadership team, myself included, and I introduced, uh, Abraham and Joel, and both Abe and Joel have been with us since 2001. So I'm very proud of the work that our pro-information staff do each and every day. Uh, these folks are high caliber and they're strong character. They're experienced and they're knowledgeable. Their empathy and their creativity, their resourcefulness and their professionalism, I think it's outstanding. The work that they do with people that come through our door each and every day Often goes unnoticed, under the radar and unrecognized, but I recognize it and I value it and I very much appreciate it. And I believe that Benton County is very fortunate to have them as part of its team. Next, I want to talk a little bit about our office workload and how we prioritize. Uh, Community Corrections in the state of Oregon, we're responsible for the supervision of convicted adult justice-involved individuals whom the courts and the parole board have placed in, in our community. And one of our main goals is to help people address the issues that has caused them To enter into and be involved in the criminal justice system and ultimately to help them leave criminal justice system. So in terms of workload distribution and programs, we continue to prioritize our most valuable resources on the highest risk population. And that's how we make decisions about personnel, caseload assignments, Programming, referrals, field time, subsidy dollars, UAs, et cetera. And we make consistent efforts to pay attention to the research and the best practices within our profession. Another important aspect is understanding the, uh, evidence-based principle of risk, need and responsiveness. And that begins with using validated risk assessments. And the results of those risk assessments directs our supervision strategies and how we prioritize our resources. How we organize our overall caseload, whether it be caseload assignments, developing comprehensive case plans, Uh, making effective use of referrals, interventions and sanctions, Or being actively involved in reentry efforts within the Department of Corrections. And the use of validated risk assessments also helps to ensure that we do not over-supervise and over-expose low-risk clients to the criminal justice system. So next, I want to talk about our programs. So our Community Corrections Plan that you have outlines our caseloads and our programs, but I do want to run through them. So we have several medium-high-risk level caseloads. We have one low, limited-risk level caseload. We have our transition program, which primarily focuses on prison releases, reentry and wraparound services. We have our drug treatment court caseload. We have a gender-specific caseload. We have our sex offender supervision program, which also involves a sex offender treatment provider and a polygraph examiner. And then we also have our Sheriff's Office Work Crew Program, which is a valuable non-custody sanction option. We also have our evidence-based programming and we have our transition center, Which provides structured, clean and sober subsidized housing, often for folks that would otherwise have a difficult time Being placed in the community otherwise. Again, these caseloads and these programs, they go back to prioritizing our resources to focus On the highest-risk population to reoffend and utilizing validated risk assessments. Also wanted to mention too, that in January 2023, our evidence-based programming, which is run by our staff, Received a formal program review from the Department of Corrections Review Team. And the program review evaluates the categories of risk and need and implementation, treatment dosage and structure. And our office received a formal response from the DOC showing the overall effectiveness of this program. And as a result, the score that received, uh, the program is not going to be due for evaluation for several years. So in Benton County and statewide, our offices continue to be forward-thinking As a profession in terms of adhering to evidence-based principles, understanding risk need, Using validated risk assessments, developing comprehensive case plans, Making effective use of referrals, interventions and sanctions, Being involved heavily in the reentry efforts with the Department of Corrections through our transition program, Not over-supervising low-risk clients and focusing our resources on supervising the highest-risk population. So that's a pretty quick run-through, but that's a little bit about our budget, our staff, our workload and our programs. Uh, to say that the last biennium, uh, was a challenge, uh, is an, is an understatement. And I anticipate that this one will be a significant challenge as well. But I really want to just credit our staff for the work that they do each and every day, uh, Uh, in terms of the, the challenges that are presented to them. And, uh, Yeah. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to, happy to answer those.
I, I have some questions about the actual work plan. Um, and, and just a comment that With the Association of Oregon Counties and I know for the Community Corrections Directors, the biggest priority this short legislative session is to address The whole funding structure for community corrections. I, I think it is, um, Very frustrating because of the fact that it, it's always backwards looking. Uh, so it looks back at the caseload that, uh, everyone experienced during COVID when cases weren't being processed and there, um, Weren't enough defense attorneys, et cetera. Uh, and so it, it typically chronically underfunds county community corrections. And it also makes it very difficult to be proactive and to provide, Prevent that more preventative, um, effort that, uh, rather than just doing, serving the minimum number of people that come through our doors, right? So, uh, it, it's, I find it very frustrating and I, I hope that with the legislature this year, there can be a shift in the way that's approached. Specific question, uh, now or should, or do you want to?
However you, however you'd like.
One of the questions I had for you is kind of off-base in some ways, but the Community Corrections Plan itself on page 166 Includes a Benton County mission. And that mission and overreaching goal are one that, uh, I frankly don't know exactly when it evolved or where it came from Because it, it was probably before, uh, 2017 when I first took office. And, uh, I am just aware of, of that right now because we are talking as a county about embarking on strategic planning. And so I, I was curious whether you knew about where that overall Benton County mission statement came from.
I'd, I'd have to go back and look at, um, where, where some of it, because this, this plan has been Done and ready for, I would say at least three months now. As I've kind of volleyed it back and forth with the Department of Corrections to ask them to kind of put their final eyes On it to make sure that it includes what they wanted to include before we go through the approval process. So I can go back and, and, and look, um, in, in terms of where, where this, where this came from though. But my guess is that it was from a previous, just the previous bienniums. Yeah, Community Corrections Plan.
Yeah. Okay. I'd be curious to.
And if there is an update.
Yeah.
To be included in there.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it would be pretty, pretty easy to.
Exactly. Yeah. I, I think that we'll just have to do some homework and I think for this plan, it's probably just fine. The, um, couple other questions. This plan speaks specifically to the drug treatment court caseload and as we know, the drug treatment court is on pause. And also speaks to the, uh, drug treatment court sanctioned beds at Norcore. So what, what is, how are you all thinking about that caseload right now with respect to your role with drug treatment court?
So, I mean, that's, it's been an ongoing conversation that we've been having in our office. And we're really just waiting for the decision to be made, but we really want it to be at the table As to the sustainability of the program. So for us, uh, myself personally, I was the, uh, pro-formation officer assigned to the drug treatment court program Under then Judge Holcomb for seven years. So I have a lot of historical perspective on the, uh, the drug treatment court program. And I've watched it go through ups and downs over the years. And at the same time, regardless of the ups and downs, our, the sheriff's office and our pro-formation division, We have just wanted to be at the table to assist in any way we could, whether it be the supervision component of it, referrals to the program Or, uh, addressing some of the housing issues that come up as well.
Yeah, thank you. I'm, um, hopeful that Over the next biennial grant cycle for Criminal Justice Commission, we can reapply for, uh, funding. So we'll, we'll just see where that goes. Can you tell me what the typical caseload is for each of your parole, the probation officers?
So on average, I think we're about, and, and Joel and Abraham can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think on average right now, our, our high, medium caseloads are around 40.
Thank you. And last question, who are some of your primary community partners in the work that you do?
So the, the Health Department, Sterling Management, the Oxford House, Milestones, Chance. Yeah, there's, there, depending on where, uh, Vina Moses, Love Inc., The Cold Weather Shelter. I mean, it, yeah, there's, there's a lot of resources that we, we lean heavily on Throughout the, um, just on a day-to-day basis with folks that are coming through our doors and, and the work that our folks are doing every day. So whether it be prison release caseload, sex offender caseload, uh, high to medium. We just have, uh, varying needs of people that come through.
And do you end up supervising folks that come, um, in with, uh, speaking English as a second language and, um, uh, coming from other cultures and how do you handle that?
Yeah. So we, we rely on the, um, so we've had some folks that have been within the office that have been a, a resource for that. Uh, we've had them actually from the jail too, whether it be, um, Converting documents to, uh, help that, uh, help that interaction. Or we've had family members that have come in with people too. And also we rely too on the, uh, The county's translation services is what we've done as well. And most recently, uh, Katie Bateman took on that project.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had a, a question on the transition center and just what's the, Maybe describe the program a little bit and what's, what's the current capacity and is that adequate?
So our, our transition center is, uh, On our, on our block, right around the corner from the law enforcement building there. It's two furnished apartments and it's basically a, uh, a housing option primarily for prison releases. So we have our pro-formation officer who's assigned to our transition program and then also our, uh, sex offender program That are usually the two that end up prioritizing those beds. So it's made up of two apartments. One of them, uh, has a capacity of four and the other one has a capacity of two. It's not a lockdown facility, but it is very highly structured. It has a, uh, a, a lot of rules and regulations and expectations in terms of behavior, reporting and, uh, and what have you.
Thank you. Uh, in our packet on page 157, there's your budget summary. Total $5,204,000. Uh, is that for the current year?
I can answer that. It's actually over the biennium. So this actually covers two years.
But the current.
Correct.
Current biennium. Okay. I guess On the state, uh, 252 million, which is less than, uh, Less several Biennia. Is that the, is the state doing anything to supplement that or is that, that's, That's what you get?
That's what we get.
Okay. Good. Cause we, we just had a nice discussion on our restaurant fees and how much to increase them. Uh, just to keep up and I guess I would Take along with Commissioner Ojero's comments that, uh, that That doesn't seem like a very good plan. Yes, we can discuss that later or see, uh, see how the, what comes out of the short session. That's Is there any rationale? You're doing such a good job that you don't need, uh, as much money as you got last time or?
Wouldn't explain, I wouldn't describe it as a rationale. Uh, it's, it's, uh, I, I do know that there's a lot of discussion right now about reevaluating How they go about their funding formula. And so our, our dollars are from the Department of Corrections, the Community, Community Corrections Division of the Department of Corrections. So state allocated dollars. And so, um, I was just in a meeting last week where, uh, the directors were present with the Department of Corrections and their, There's a lot of back and forth as to the system needing an overhaul in terms of taking a snapshot On the funding formula for statewide.
Okay. Uh, thank you for that. And I, and in your report, I appreciated, uh, Org chart, um, with, with your staff and, uh, Thank them for, uh, Getting us through the COVID dimes in, in reasonably, uh, good shape and, and under very Drying circumstances.
Thank you.
One last question. It's an easy one. Uh, you mentioned UAs. What does that mean?
Your analysis tests.
Okay. See, I told you it'd be easy.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, my question is about the, um, plan. So it's one, page 171 of our packet. Mentions the Benton County Drug Treatment Court. And should that still be in there since we're not currently?
So, uh, in talking with the Department of Corrections, the answer is yes, that it still should be, that, that they would want it still in there. And if there is a change later on in the biennium that becomes finalized, where there needs to be a modification to the plan, We would be obligated to submit that change to the Department of Corrections as well. So then you would end up seeing me back here.
Do you currently have a couple of people that are just finishing out the drug treatment court program that are still in supervision?
Yes, and Joel can speak to this, but I do believe that there's a handful of people that are still, um, the court is trying to resolve how to, in that time with, with them.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, you have questions? I just had a general comment. I guess, uh, I'll just say thank you for all the work that you do and the more that I learn about parole and probation, Um, the more that I am, um, impressed and thankful. Um, so thank you all for your resolute service to Benton County.
I do have just a couple of numbers, questions. Um, this, um, Grant and aid from the state at 2.2.466 million roughly. Is that less than last year? Did, or did, were, how close to our last biennium? How close are we to the last biennium? I know some counties saw huge shifts.
So I can talk about that. So it is actually less than what we've received in the years past. And so, um, I don't know if you remember back at the budget, we were talking about, there was some worry that we weren't going to have enough
Yeah.
Call over in order to cover it. So we were able So we were able to cover this biennium without asking for general fund dollars. Um, I mean, we obviously have our Transition Center and that's our levy dollars, um, but as far as, uh, the state dollars. But I, I have warned my group that I anticipate that we will not have the rollover going into next year. Especially if they continue to keep cutting this year after year. And so we will have to have some serious discussions, uh, next biennium, because I just don't think they're going to be the million dollar rollover that we've had every year that kind of keeps this program going. So.
Yeah, and I see the seven hundred and eighty thousand dollar carryover. And, um, I was going to ask about that next. Is, is that just been basically position vacancy savings over time that have accumulated?
Um, yes and no. Um, I wouldn't say it was vacancy. I would say it's being very careful with the dollars that they spend. Um, and not needing to the extent we have, this rollover has been going on for a long time. So that predates my time as coming in, but I kind of have to monitor that for the state. And so it's, we've had levy dollars coming in, we've had grant dollars coming in that's helped, um, cover some of that and let us have a rollover. But I, I think those days are, are getting numbered though.
Yes, I would think so. Yeah. Well, thank you for watching it carefully.
All right, if there's, uh, no, no more questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the IG between the state and county. On page one forty-one.
I move.
Go ahead.
Let's all move.
Okay, I move to approve the twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five Community Corrections Plan and Intergovernmental Agreement number six five two-two. Between the State of Oregon and Benton County. Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now, uh, change of pace. Requesting that, request, requesting an exemption from competitive bidding for the new Benton County Emergency Operations Center. For the use of the construction, your general contractor services of contracting. Bring up the title next time, Gary, would you?
I try. Commissioners, good morning. Gary Stock of Public Works. Uh, it was about a year ago that we brought this, uh, request for an exception, exemption from competitive bidding. Or at the time, it was the entire JSIP project or body of work. And, uh, at that time, it was, uh, the board decided just to limit it to the courthouse and the DA. Uh, and that we would come back as we needed to. So with the funding being secured for the EOC. Uh, we are now back before you to request that exception. So that we can continue on using our current CMGC contractor. And you'll notice that the findings, the findings of fact are a little bit different than the last time in that. Last time we hadn't gone through that CMGC process yet. So we didn't have a contractor. This time we do, we're just admitting it so that we can include this work to that. So today is a, uh, basically a kind of a work session for you to ask questions about this. And then, uh, we'll set a public hearing for November seventh. To make that. And, uh, Mr. Croney has crafted the order. So I'm sure there's questions about that because it is Mr. Croney. But. Any questions?
Well, I, I guess, um, maybe just a little bit of background, Gary, why this, uh, what, why, why we are, uh, proceeding this way?
Um, the ORS requires that if we're going to do anything different than the competitive bidding, that we have to have a finding of fact that supports us doing that CMGC process. So last year, we went through, and if you remember, I had a lot of reasonings why we needed cost effectiveness, timeliness, I think, I can remember all of them. But that still holds true, especially now because we're trying to get going with the EOC part of this. So that we can make sure that plans for that are ready in the fashion that Hoffman will be able to pick right up and keep going. With that part of the project, once we start the courthouse and the DA. So this is really kind of checking a box for the state so that we don't get ourselves in trouble.
Hey, uh, Vance, do you have any illumination for us?
Not something as significant as a construction or a building, but, but it is, it's not common, but it's not unusual.
Most of our projects, the ones that Laurel oversees are designed, bid, built, or the traditional way. Uh, it's just we've got these wonderful construction projects that we've come through and where the buildings and CMGC process really worked well for those. But see these in this situation.
Excuse me, um, not specifically to, to this, um, project, but it would be, uh, I think helpful to the board and probably wider community to, uh, have a, uh, maybe a one pager with the timeline of, of, we have some significant projects, uh, pending. And just, uh, the Crisis Center, courthouse, DA's office, uh, EOC. And it would be nice to have, uh, uh, a, a timeline. I know something like the Crisis Center, the timeline could be relatively accurate at this point. And some of the, uh, something like the EOC might, um, be, be a little more of a range of, uh, start date and, uh, complete, completion date. But, uh, ju- just so we have, um, some notion what the, uh, what the timelines are.
And I, I, we're really close to having the opportunity to do that. I, I will say I signed a change order for the Crisis Center this morning. Uh, so that's right now, the, the last big hurdle, we believe, for them to actually start work. So right now, I would, I should have a new schedule for the Crisis Center, hopefully tomorrow morning. And then, uh, that will have the start date, the end date, but we think they'll start around the first of November. So yay, that is something we've been waiting on.
Twenty twenty-three.
Huh?
Twenty twenty-three.
Thank you for clarifying. Yes, Commissioner, twenty twenty-three. Uh, so that is a big, big step forward for that project. And we've had a lot of things to deal with and, and again with Ricky.
Challenges, we call them.
Yes, opportunities. Uh, Ricky and Paul and the health team and, and Rick, uh, Craig, uh, just been a great process to get the project where it's at. Um, as you all know, we made a, a big move forward here a couple of weeks ago on the courthouse. Uh, and with that, we have a better idea of when we'll be submitting for plans for instruction for the, um, building itself, for the site work. The private investment, public contract that we need to do with Corvallis. I should have a better timeframe for that, hopefully in the next month or so. Uh, but right now, we're hoping for, uh, late March, early April, instruction start for that project. And then the EOC would probably be sometime after that. But we do have the team ready to go for the EOC. And we'll just pick right up and, and move along, keep that one in, in the queue as well. Great team. We have great architect, uh, owners rep, all the sub consultants and, and I, I couldn't be more pleased. And Hoffman has been just wonderful. So I'm glad that we're able to kind of keep going with them. They have been very, very helpful.
Well, and then with those timelines, we can, uh, get that to Cory and so he can, uh, get this information out to the wider community. That, uh, things are happening and, and this is the proposed schedule.
And Cory and I have talked, and so I think we're ready to kind of, we got the framework and now I need to, need to fill in some, a little more concrete information. So we're not just winging it. So, not that we winged it.
Okay, thank you.
So my question is, um, is the Board of Commissioners exemption sufficient? Does it have to be, um, justified by the state or the fed, federal government or? Not, not that I have any question about the four and a half pages of findings. So they're very solid, but just curious.
No, the exemption process is permitted, uh, under state statute, um, whether, and, and whether a government uses the model contracting rules or whether they've adopted their own contract rules, which we have. So as long as we follow our rules, you have the full authority to exempt the contract.
If there's no other questions, I want to ask for a motion.
I move to set a public hearing date for November seventh, twenty twenty-three in the matter of approval of the findings of fact for requesting an exemption from competitive bidding. For the new Benton County Emergency Operations Center for the use of the Construction Manager General Contractor, CMGC Services of Contracting.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you and looking forward to, um, more information about our, uh, many project, many large, uh, projects that we have on the books.
Many.
Several, I guess is the right, several. Oh, Vance, does it matter if we do the public hearing now or have to already finish up?
It is entirely up to you. The, the only requirement is we get to eleven o'clock anytime thereafter. You may conduct that public.
Okay, uh, if you're ready, uh, why don't we roll into review and approval of the Benton Area Transit twenty twenty-three Title Six Plan and Update?
Uh, real quick, uh, this is a requirement from FTA through ODOT. Uh, it's supposed to be done every three years as we outlined between COVID and after COVID and other things, it didn't happen. Uh, Brad was working on it. Uh, then this summer, we had a performance audit back in July. And we knew that this was one item that was going to be highlighted. So Brad went ahead and finished it up. Uh, it has been reviewed by ODOT FTA and they're good with it. Uh, but as Commissioner Ojero pointed out, there may have been some things that we might want to look at or tweak. Uh, I believe we could make minor edits on this now and still be in compliance without having to go back to ODOT FTA. Uh, the other thing, and I, I think Brad, there, oh, there he is. Uh, he's here to answer questions on it too. But if, if we're, we're, we're required to update it once every three years. But there's nothing, I believe, that says that we couldn't come back in a year and, and do some other edits and, and updates that we might want to have included there. Again, there are, I think this is, it didn't change much from the last time. But clearly, there's things that need to be added and, and, you know, or could be added and it's really up to the board. But right now, I think the sense of urgency is that we want to get this one adopted so that we're in compliance. And then we can follow up with some other changes if, if, if as directed. So with that, I will answer questions and Brad's here to also help. He was really the primary, put, put her together of it. There's an official statement.
Yeah, I definitely have questions. Um, and first one is, um, does Brad serve as our, uh, Title Six Coordinator?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I think my biggest, um, comment, just for the benefit of, uh, my fellow commissioners, is that, uh, this is an area that it seems that would be very natural to bring Sarah Siddiki in. As our Equity Diversity and Inclusion Coordinator. She's the one that is the steward of the language policy. Um, in twenty seventeen, when we first created this policy and, uh, when it was Lee working on it, he worked very closely with Lee and Neville, who was playing that, um, language policy role at that time. Um, so I, I think that we need to make sure that there's a linkage there, um, because this, uh, policy, um, and, and addressing Civil Rights Act issues. Um, definitely, uh, it falls squarely in Sarah's wheelhouse and she's got a lot of expertise that she could contribute, uh, to any future edits. Uh, she will have the most recent, um, both language policy and language process and practice and vendors, um, to, for use in this, um, plan. So that we are indeed in compliance, uh, with FTA regulations. And the other comment I have is that, um, I wanted to know, or to note that the list of community organizations that are listed there for outreach. Just to my mind, not complete. Um, and it doesn't include any of the disability organizations. Uh, it, it, and it could be a little bit broader in terms of including the Lynn Benton Health Equity Alliance or the Corvallis Multicultural Literacy Center. Which the latter brings in a lot of the other smaller language groups and, and populations. And I know that we don't have, uh, a, a large ridership from, uh, some of these populations. But I think that that's partly because we don't really market very well in those populations either. So I think that there's a real two-way need for communication with, um, some of the, uh, these communities in the county so that they know about this resource. The other question I have, because it wasn't clear to me from the packet, was whether this, uh, version of the plan had been shared with the STIF. Um, I know that the combined, um, Advisory Committee, uh, that now combines the disability, the paratransit and the, the transit funding, um, components. Is really much more slanted towards the funding side of things. And I, I couldn't tell whether the Advisory Committee had seen this at all.
I would ask Brad that question.
Not yet. Hello, Commissioners. Um, uh, they have not yet. We are hoping to have a, a meeting, uh, by the end of the year. We're trying to fill a couple of positions at this time though.
Okay, um, I, I prefer to approve a policy like this after Advisory Committee input and not before. Um, so I, I think we're putting the cart before the horse in terms of doing that. And I agree, I'm, it's really important to fill those last couple of seats on the Advisory Committee because it does not have much representation from any of the, uh, the, can, identities or communities represented in the Civil Rights Act or, um, uh, the American Disability Act at this time. And I would like to see that change. So those are my main comments and questions at this time.
Commissioner Ojero, are you, um, proposing that staff brings us back after, um, doing more of what you mentioned?
I, I would prefer that the, the, uh, plan be run past the Advisory Committee and that it also, um, um, that Sarah Siddiki has a chance to take a look and comment and, um, make sure that, uh, this particular policy is in accordance with the policies for the countywide.
I, I would maybe just, I, I think that the STIF Committee has four required groups that we need to have a representative for. And the one group that we had a very difficult time last time, and, and that person has since resigned, is the, the disability group. Until we have somebody representing that, I don't think we have a, a standing committee. That's my understanding. That, that they could meet, they could give maybe, I don't think you give a recommendation per se. But they could at least review it and, and provide comments. But I think we do need a disability representative as part of the committee. At least that's my understanding.
I, I would be curious about that interpretation based on, uh, state statute. And I think we just need to clarify, uh, that. Um, there's also, that one person was also the only person of color on the committee. And so I, I really do think we need to work on that membership.
I believe we have. We went out just a couple of months ago to solicit interest in, in people putting in. I don't believe we had any applicants for that, that group.
I think that we need to keep working on that and do some proactive outreach. Um, I know I've spoken to a couple of people. Um, and I'm hoping that I will have more applications. But Teresa Larson would have the latest information about who's applied.
Commissioners, we will work on that after this meeting and we will connect you with our DEI Coordinator as well, coming up with the strategy to expand our advisory group.
So on the, this agreement, what's the time, what's the timeline that we're working with?
Well, at this point, I think we, we can go back and try to fill the committee, have them meet with our E D I Coordinator and, and then have it ready as soon as we can. Just trying to think ahead of how long that might be. Probably earliest would be December. By the time we got the committee filled, through the process to fill the committee and then pull the meeting together for them and then get back on the agenda. So. I think we're, we're three years late. You know, right now. So if it's another month or two, I don't know if anybody's going to take away our birthday. So.
Have we received the results of the performance audit yet?
No, and we are waiting on that because there are items there that we do want to be able to follow up on the direction of that audit.
Okay, and that might give us a more certain timeframe because they may give us a certain window in which we have to get this done by.
Correct, yes.
Okay. I had one other little more detailed question and Brad might be the best able to answer it. There are. But how, I'm trying to figure out what they're called here. The service standards embedded in this plan in terms of timeliness, et cetera. Have those changed at all since the twenty seventeen version?
They, they have not because they meet the federal requirements. So the, the plan that's put in front of you, I worked really closely with O dot's Title Six Coordinator as well as the F T A reviewer to ensure that everything in the plan is approved by O dot. So, no, those have not changed.
Okay, do we have tracking data to actually track our performance?
We do. However, we are, we are undergoing a new dispatch software upgrade. So once that is up and running, we're, we're in the thick of it right now. And once that is up and running, we'd be able to track very well.
Thank you. I would look forward to being able to see, you know, anytime we have standards and metrics. I like to see that we actually are meeting them or if not, why not? Thank you.
Definitely.
All right, so we will postpone approving this.
We'll be back.
Hopefully see you back here with this issue in December.
Or we'll come up with a schedule when we can, depending on how the recruitment goes for the S D I of committee and then.
Thank you.
And our E D I.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you, Brad.
All right, next up is our public hearing. Staff will present their report and that's Ron Dietrich. And any testimony. Anyone else will occur and then any staff response if necessary. Welcome, Ron.
Good morning. So this should be pretty quick and straightforward. So the Building Division is requesting your approval on a fee increase. That's the last fee increase went into effect April first, twenty twenty-one. This is an index to the inflation rate, inflation rate for the last two years. And so we're actually going into three, use this a bit, but it was twelve point six percent. So we're asking for a twelve percent increase on specifically mechanical, electrical and plumbing permits. This would not structural permits, they're figured in a different way. They're automatically adjusted yearly by the state. They go into effect April first, so the valuations change. But electrical, mechanical, plumbing are not, so. We're requesting that they be adjusted for the inflation that has occurred over the last plus years.
Testimony by anyone else wishing to present evidence. Or anyone that would like to speak at this time. Hearing done. I will close the record and the board will deliberate and make a decision.
And my question for you is, have we done any kind of notice to the community and?
So, a little, I know it's not a history piece, but so perspective on why Building Division doesn't come on a yearly basis is it's a fairly involved process for the Building Division to raise fees. We, we operate under the behest of the State of Oregon Building Code Division under a memorandum of understanding. It requires us, when we do have a fee increase, to first go to the state with our proposal. They contact our customers in a sense, they reach out to them. They also compare with other jurisdictions in our area to make sure our fees are in the same area and not out of or skewed one way or another. So this process actually started last April. And with our reaching out to the state. And then the state approves us for moving forward for a public hearing.
Okay, that, that's helpful to know. Every set of fees that we approve, it works a little bit differently. So it's nice to know that this has been a long process and that there has been consultation. I was also going to ask about our compared or neighbor counties. So that processes of comparison is done at the state level, is that?
Yes.
Okay. I have no further questions.
So the, the recommended twelve percent increase that was recommended by the state?
No, that was entirely, I receive based on the Consumer Price Index from our finance department. This was last, actually last February. With the inflationary rate. So it's on the discretion of the jurisdiction to increase fees. I guess you could decrease fees, but in order to operate the program. So.
Sure.
Dealing the program is self-funded or is for itself.
Okay, so I guess what I'm looking for is the nexus or the demonstration between the P C I or the, yeah, there are the C P I of twelve point six percent and the need for us to increase it by twelve percent, but you're saying that the state has looked at this?
So they've looked at the amount that we propose, correct?
Okay, because I'm just, is there any demonstration that our costs of doing this is going to be twelve percent more?
I guess the demonstration would be that we did not. We did not pull in the money we actually had to spend out of our carryover to meet our costs.
Okay, and looking at the money that we had to carry over, would that twelve percent have been enough to bridge that gap? Or would it still not have been enough?
In this last year, due to the economy depressing a bit, probably not.
Okay.
So I mean, it is, over the last twenty-four years I've been here, it's been a guessing game and you do your best.
Okay, thank you.
Always difficult to project the, yes, the number of permits that come in and the new construction in particular. Yeah, it really, really variable. That sounds good. I think that part of the line of questioning that Commissioner Wise is asking arises from the fact that we reviewed the environmental health fees earlier in this meeting. And that whole formula is based very heavily on the cost recovery. And this is not necessarily built explicitly on cost recovery. That's, that was the reason for the question. So.
The reason for my question? Well, the reason for my question is just that I was curious and I actually read this in the packet before I read environmental health. But we do have both of them and yeah.
Right.
Thank you.
And these three program areas are relatively small compared to structural program area. I don't know the exact percentages, but I would guess that the structural probably brings in half the revenue. And the other three areas make up the other half.
And. So the twelve, the twelve percent increase is looking backwards over the last three years and. So it sounds like we're set up to be behind.
Correct.
But trying to catch up and.
Stay a little closer.
So the twelve percent is, should be divided by three and it's four percent per year. You may have made it up in different ways, but on average, four percent increase per year, three years. Any other questions?
I just, I just want to point out Commissioner Ojero mentioned that every one of these fee increases is a little bit different. And that is true. What is unique about this particular request is by statute, building fee alteration, changes, increases, decreases potentially must go through a public hearing process. None of our other fee increases need to go through the public hearing process, which is why we've got this scheduled today. So yes, it is, it is unusual. Just another example of that, you know, no two things are the same.
All right, if there's no other questions, I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we adopt Order D twenty twenty-three dash oh seven four, amending Benton County's Building Division twenty twenty-four application fees relating to electrical plumbing and mechanical permits.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Ray Day.
Thank you.
All right. Would you like to share that with the rest of the class? Okay.